Notice is hereby given of a Friendswood City Council Regular Meeting to be held at 4:30 on Monday, May 7, 2018, at Friendswood City Hall Council Chambers, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas, regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. I'll call the meeting to order. And we'll have the invocation by Pastor Howard Hune from Friendswood United Methodist, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance for the United States and Texas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do resent regrets on behalf of Jim Bass, our senior pastor, who was unable to be here. A friend of his has just been diagnosed with cancer, and so he's had a prayer meeting with him and asked for me to come in his place. Let us pray. Almighty God, you tell us in the words of Micah what your requirements are for us, to do justice, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with you, our God. Father, this day we ask that we do just that, that we do justice for the citizens of this city of Friendswood, that we love mercy, Lord, that we walk humbly as your servants. Bless this meeting, and may your presence be known, be felt. May you lead us, and may we follow. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas side, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item four, Communication from the Public. To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the City Council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizens' comment period. Ken Clark?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Glad to see you all today. I rise to the occasion of speaking on a couple items. One is item 14 in regards to the Friendswood Drive, Friendswood Lakes, Friendswood Parkway. Happy to see that we're moving forward on that. But my main purpose is in regards to consent to item number F in regards to the CDBG funding. As many of you are aware, we've talked before, but this letter, along with other actions that we'll need to take moving forward, will address four to five basic issues on the CDBG funding. We're in a 60-day, we're in a 90-day comment period while HUD has an opportunity to look at the state action plan, which was released on April 9, in regards to the $5.024 billion. We've got four to five major issues that we need to address. One is the low to moderate income in regards to housing. That particular level is set at 70%, which means 70% of the money that is spent has to go to low to moderate income individuals. Well, low to moderate income percentage in Friendswood's 15.36%, which means that we will be unable to recover using federal housing dollars moving forward. That's why we're requesting a waiver from HUD on that in the state action plan. The other issue is, is that HUD wants the state to build all the housing from Austin. Austin doesn't necessarily understand the local issues that we have on the ground here, so we've asked for a waiver on that. The second, the third area of concern is the infrastructure dollars. 70% of the infrastructure dollars have to be spent on low to moderate income individuals. And to give you an example, is let's say we have a low to moderate income pocket in Dickinson, along Dickinson Bayou, but all that water flows through the more affluent or non-LMI areas in Lake City. When they decide what the LMI percentage on a project is, it has to, it takes the entire footprint of the project, which would make, basically make all projects ineligible for CDBG infrastructure, which would also include buyouts and property acquisition. So, we're asking for a waiver on that. That particular waiver is called an upper quartile. CDBG is administered by HUD, and HUD has a waiver program called the upper quartile. And what that allows the communities that they've granted that waiver on to match their local low to moderate income percentage. So, instead of the low to moderate percentage in Friendswood being 70%, we may be able to reduce that down to something less, say 16 or 20%, and use the balance of the money to work on the projects that would help benefit Friendswood, because we've got a number of drainage issues that we need to address, a number of other projects. Talked with Harris County Flood Control today in a workshop, and shared with them the problem that we had with the clearing and de-snagging on the Harris County side of Clear Creek, working on Oxbows, potentially putting in inline detention. And we're also going to meet here shortly to discuss the Clear Creek Flood Control Project, which is part of the $15.3 billion that was voted on by Congress for funding. So, we're going to be competitive with that project. But I reiterate in no uncertain terms is that we don't want to create a project in Brazoria County that just moves more water into Friendswood faster. So, we're going to have that dialogue and those discussions. So, I just wanted to update you on that. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. Unfortunately, I won't be able to stay after your executive session. I've got a candidate's form over in Lake City at 6:00, so I'll be attending that. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. If you all would allow me to suspend the rules and move item eight up. Item eight, Special Recognition and Acknowledgement, oath of office administered by former city manager Roger Recker to new city manager Murad Kabiri. Hi, Roger.
It's been a long time.
Is it?
I'm sure it is.
Trying to tell me something? Good to see you.
Jeff's going to tell us what to do. I have my brother-in-law sitting on the third row of the bikes, playing Spivey, and his son Bowie Spivey, Nathan next to him, and my other nephew Will Spivey, my son Seth, good family friends of our son Caleb, my beautiful wife Laura, my friends Cindy and Jay Starkey, my cousin's son Dominic, my cousin Rachel, my son Drake, and my peasant Chris Travis, my best friend since middle school, Pleasant Herbert, his wife Kate Hartman, and my mom Kate Houston. It's a good thing you got her. I just want to say to council what a great decision you all made in promoting Murad. He will do a fantastic job. I'm excited to look forward to the years ahead and see great things that he's going to accomplish with you all's help. And I should say I'm the citizens of Friendswood, the supporters of him, and I just want to say thank him. So, where do we stand, Jeff?
You're good.
All right. I state your name. I'm Murad Kabiri. Do solemnly swear or affirm? Do you solemnly swear or affirm? That I will faithfully execute the duties? That I will faithfully execute the duties? Of the office of city manager for the city of Friendswood? The office of city manager for the city of Friendswood? The Alston and Harris Counties and the state of Texas? The Alston and Harris Counties and the state of Texas? And will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend? Will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend? The Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state? The Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state? And so will me back, so will me back? Congratulations.
Item B, Presentation of Appreciation to Friendswood High School Media Interns. You want me to have them line up along the wall so you can take a picture of them? Okay. Today, we honor five Friendswood High School graduating seniors who have also been part of the City of Friendswood Multimedia Internship Program. Missing two? Am I missing two?
Yes.
Okay. If you'll just raise your hand when I say, say the correct name. Antonio Cardenas has worked on a number of the city's TV productions, including the city's Fourth of July Parade and Friendswood Strong Concert. He plans to attend San Jacinto Community College and pursue a communications degree. Congratulations. Victoria Hobbs also plans to attend San Jacinto Community College. She will pursue a nursing degree. One of Victoria's TV projects was the opening of Lake Friendswood. Katie Malloy plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin and pursue a communications degree. Some of her projects include reporting on the Daddy Daughter Dance, Santa in the Park, and the Flapjack Fun Run. Thank you very much. I've got two more I'll introduce. These folks helped out while they were going to school and really gave part of their time to the city of Friendswood and the Communication and Multimedia Department, and I want to thank you very much. Thank you. Tyler Radigan plans to attend Baylor University and pursue a biochemist degree. He has been part of the city's Concert in the Park TV Production Crew and the Soccer Field Dedication Event. Kylie Trotty plans to attend the University of Alabama and pursue a news media and political science degree. Kylie worked on the city's Hurricane Harvey cleanup and faith-based community stories. All of these students have also worked in the production booth, back in the back, during city council and planning zoning missions, meetings. They are also graduates of the four-year Mustang Cable System Program at Friendswood High School. Their Friendswood High School instructor is Mr. Al Tag. Now entering its fourth year, the media internship program with the FISD has been a beneficial partnership for the students and the city. The city of Friendswood appreciates the many hours these graduating students have worked as volunteer interns to document and broadcast the sights and sounds of the many good things going on in Friendswood. Thank you very, very much. Presentation of the Five-Star Spirit Award for the first quarter of 2018 to Michael Boyett, Recreation Superintendent, Parks and Rec Department. Murad?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. These are, this is one of the joys of the job that I've never got to experience, but Roger would always tell me that this is the perk of being a city manager. We have the privilege this evening to honor Michael Boyett, our Parks and Recreation Superintendent, for a Five-Star Spirit Award. As many of you know Michael, over the years, he's done quite a bit of things for the city of Friendswood, but one of them is heading up our Five-Star Spirit Committee. And in years past, he would withdraw himself from consideration for this award, but this year, he wasn't able to do so due to the quality of the nomination that came in. We had a, the Hyde family here in Friendswood, a year or so ago, lost their daughter, and as a tribute to her, there was a ceremony out in Stevenson Park where they planted a tree in honor of her. In their words, they wanted to recognize Michael in his kindness, consideration, professionalism, and just all-around dedication to them in this very difficult time in their lives. Michael truly embodies the qualities we want here in Friendswood and what this Five-Star Spirit Award represents. With that, I'd like to ask Michael and his family to come up here and accept the award. And I'm sorry, I should have had them come up sooner. Michael, would you introduce your family?
Howdy. This is Kohler.
This is Brant.
This is Tesley.
And my beautiful wife Diana.
Congratulations. We'll go back to item five. Patrick, A, Capital Projects Update?
This may not be as uplifting, but I'll try and get through this. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, Council. Tonight's capital project update is, for those of you at home, we review the projects that we're going through, kind of give you a status update in time, and kind of also talk about, a little bit about the future. The first project we're going to talk about tonight is our Old City Park. We went out for bids, we've awarded a bid last month, we met with the contractor, and the notice to proceed for the contractor to start work is May 14. The project that they will be working on will be the trail that starts, we're at the existing trail at Old City Park ends that connects to Stevenson Park and goes around, which will be the future dog park, and also the pavement for parking for 44 spaces, and then the drive as it heads out to Briar Meadow. Contract time for this project is 100 calendar days. The next portion of the Old City Park Master Plan that we'll be working with is the pavilion and the restroom building connecting concrete portion, and then this portion will, the trail that I recently showed, will connect directly to the pavilion. These are drawings that we received today. We are in the final stages of the design for the restroom and pavilion, and we'll be going out for bids in the near future. As far as some of the work that city crews did, as I was showing this, one person said, "So, is that one of the new trucks?" Yes, that is one of the new Chevys that we have received, but also what we're looking at is what's underground. Last month, you may recall, you would have seen some water lines and some sewer lines that were above ground. They're now all installed, and one of the fire hydrants that's out there, we installed three fire hydrants out there, and so that's kind of where we're at on Old City Park. Blackhawk Boulevard, we met with the contractor, yes, sir?
Do you have an idea when the dog park will be ready for people to, dogs to run around in it?
For dogs to run around in?
Yeah.
That's more of a question for James Tony, but James is coming on down?
A PO was issued to the vendor, and so all the equipment on order. So, it's about a six-week turnaround for the equipment to be on site, and then from there to be installed.
Sometime this summer, you think?
Into the summer.
End of summer? Okay.
So, the concrete parking lot and the trail will be finished about the same time as the, as the dog park will be well under construction? Yes, Ken?
Now that that's going to be a little bit more of an active place, are there going to be gates into that parking lot, or it'll be locked off at night?
Let me go back a little bit? Okay. So, the pavement portion goes from Briar Meadow that comes in. There will be a gate right in this vicinity, right here, as this is a dawn-to-dusk park. There is currently a gravel trail that comes in this way that will be closed at all times except for when city staff are getting in to do maintenance, whether it be on the, on the dog park or on portions of the infrastructure.
There's a couple of houses in there, too.
There are houses here, and there's houses along here.
Okay.
So, James reminded me, there will be a pedestrian gate off of Marywood. So, if you were, if you wanted to walk down and go through, you could, you just couldn't drive a vehicle.
I notice those houses are all accessible from the side road there. You don't need to...
Come up from right here?
Maybe I'm twisted around. There's the dog park up there.
Dog park's up here?
Yeah.
Klein Elementary is about right over here?
Yeah, yeah, no, I thought there was a house or two right there on left, right next to the...
There is definitely a house right here.
Yeah.
There are houses right here.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir.
But they can all get at it from, was that Briar Meadows, the road there?
Briar Meadow, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. They don't need access through the gate?
So, this one residence right here?
Yeah.
Would need access, and we are working directly with them so that they would have their own clicker to be able to do it.
Okay, okay.
They do have a circular drive right in this area, but they also have a drive back here, back here, and I believe one for back towards the back. But we're working directly with them. We're not trying to limit their access.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't overlooked.
Yes, sir.
You good? Go ahead, Patrick.
All right. So, Blackhawk Boulevard, notice to proceed is June 4, 2018. The reason we're waiting until June 4 is CCISD and Wedgewood Elementary gets out the Friday before. One of, could we start today? They could probably start next week if we wanted to, but for all of the end-of-school activities, I could only imagine the phone calls that I'd be getting from people, "Why are you starting this now?" Grand scheme of the project, it's better to wait until June 4, school's out, and we start blowing and going at that point. As a reminder from last month, so they'll be going based on the addendum, addendums that were approved from Edenville all the way back to Friendswood Link. The orange portions on this are the portions of the Blackhawk that are currently not funded. With Station 23, we have received the, the report from the, from the consultant to develop the wet well. We've gone over that, we've met with our consultant, and we're finalizing an amendment to their contract to get the project, project moving and going again. The objective is to have the design plans done within the next six months, and then be going out for bid. Yes, sir?
Back on Blackhawk for one second.
Yes, sir.
That, the unfunded portion, you've got the amount necessary to fund that, correct? You know what it is?
I have a ballpark idea, but until you actually bid it...
I understand, but it was kind of a plus or minus 30%?
Plus or minus between four and five million.
How accurate you think the number, I mean, you got a dollar per foot number for the rest of it?
For this portion right here?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And there's nothing that would really any different that would...
No, sir.
Okay.
In fact, it may be a little bit easier.
All right, so if I needed that number, you could get it to me tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And you may recall that one of the things that we talked about is, so we have the sales tax money, and we talked about dedicating it towards doing additional work on Blackhawk. One of the things that we talked about is, you know, once, once they've gone from Cedar Gully back to Friendswood Lakes, or Friendswood Link, we'll know of the major pitfalls. One of the challenges that we may have in there, there's an existing storm sewer line that goes, goes down Blackhawk. We're anticipating being able to reuse that and then add additional to meet our capacity that's needed for that road. If by chance there's problems with that line, which we don't know, which we haven't seen, but just in case, then we would have the additional funds to be able to utilize that on that portion.
Okay, I understand. They could always chance the disrepairable.
So, once we finish from Cedar Gully back to Friendswood Link, I would anticipate coming back towards council and say, "Hey, we have X amount of funds that were, that are appropriated. We would like to issue a change order to go from my, I would hope we'd go from Edenville at least up to Encino Drive," which would lessen the portion that would be needed for the other, the second half. So, tech side items, I haven't heard about the Whittaker, Whittaker Drive signal. The last I talked to them, they indicated that they would be starting basically about now. I haven't seen any crews out there yet, and I haven't heard confirmation, although asked, on whether, what their anticipated start date was. The traffic signal was part of a package that were bid out within the Texas, within the Houston District. We were supposed to be second, which would put them starting basically about now. The Dunbar Estates, I don't anticipate the traffic study warranting, but they are looking at a different, a different way of looking at it, looking at it from the perspective of if they add that signal there at Dunbar, Dunbar Estates, how that would affect FM 2351. The Shadwell Left Turn striping, we're still working on that. However, I did put this in a taluses to show that it actually was completed, so I get one out of six. So, that portion is...
It looks really, it looks really good.
That turn lane.
Thank you.
The Dunbar Estates slide, are they factoring in the added traffic from the new senior apartments that are going to be, that are going in as we speak?
They're not factoring that in yet because they don't necessarily know the exact volume. However, once, once that has opened, that would be another, another reason to reopen the study and have them do it again.
I should think they'd have a pretty good handle on what the exact volume would be if we know exactly how many units are going to be there and the number of people per unit, and how many cars, and how many trips, and...
Right. The hard part, though, is that the exit out of there is not at that intersection.
Well, I understand that, but it's going to put tra, my concern is putting traffic on the road.
Yes, sir.
That will pass through the Dunbar intersection, so, all right, we can talk.
I agree with you. So, the FM 518 and 2351 and 528 left turn base, specifically at 2351, that's an area where they're going to be redoing the flower beds. So, I know they're looking at both things. I looked at the, after a meeting with the maintenance engineer, at something above their grade, however, we are talking with the district engineer about potentially getting that done. The pavement management survey, we did receive the preliminary results from IMS, and I have a, the next three slides will indicate, will show the pavement condition index for all of the roads that are under our jurisdiction within the city. The one item we don't have back from them yet is basically, they're a company out of Arizona, they don't necessarily know what's the price of asphalt, what's the price of concrete. So, when I come up here next month, I'll be able to show, "Hey, this is the dollar amount that they anticipate the city spending to keep the roads at the current condition index, and then whatever we spend below or above could help improve or maintain." So, one of the things that, I imagine if you're in the audience, it's kind of hard to see, and maybe even if you're council, it's hard to see. I do want to point out a couple different things. You do see a lot of green, and that's definitely a good thing. One of the things that the study shows is that we have a lower number of excellent roads, we have a very good number of good to very good roads, and we have a lower number of poor roads. So, basically what that says is, we've done a good job up to... So basically what that says is, we've done a good job up to this point. However, with a lower amount of excellent roads, we need to incre, we need to spend money to keep the, the good roads good before they turn, turn to poor. On this section right here, you have, you know, you can essentially see one road right up in here. This is the upper quadrant. You have Spreading Oaks down in this area. There's Wilderness Trails. Yeah, this is a lot harder than I thought. It's hard for me to see, and I know what I'm looking for. So I, I apologize for how it looks, but when we meet next month, I'll be able to say what the dollar amount to maintain, and also if we were to maintain that amount, what a five-year plan could look like from a project standpoint. Which roads we could, we would target for either full reconstruction, some sort of overlay construction, or portions of it to be done. So that'll be something I'll be able to bring at the, at the June meeting. And if you wanted to see that last slide, I can go back, but.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Have we issued an RFP, uh, for cleaning out the storm sewers after Harvey?
We're finalizing that now. We have a, essentially 140,000 linear feet of storm sewer lines that were affected. So we're, we're finishing up that, um, RFP now.
When do you anticipate issuing it?
Uh, we anticipate, we should be able to have it on next month's agenda.
Excellent.
Yes, sir.
Is, is that map that you just showed available somewhere where we can like expand and look at things? Or is it just this size?
I, I can send that to you. It's, it's, it's a PDF that can easily be expanded to you. It is a draft report, however, the, the pavement condition index isn't necessarily going to change between the information we get to and from, it just hasn't been made, uh, public because it's still a draft.
I'd like to see it, I don't know.
And if, and I can very easily email that to council in the morning. Yes, sir.
Patrick, you, you mentioned 140,000 linear feet of, of silted storm sewer. How do you, how do you determine which storm sewer lines are needing desilting and?
So what we did is, we took all of the roads that we knew were flooded for greater than three days. With that, that's what we looked at, the storm sewers that were, um, impacted. We did some spot checks. The, the portions, you know, you open the manhole, look straight down, do you see anything, do you not? On a, on a chunk of them, we didn't. However, once you go inside, because you're not necessarily getting a flushing velocity, and I, and I use that from a sanitary sewer term, debris is going to get in there. A good example would be out there by the Stevenson Park Bridge. One of the issues that we had there, hey, it's not flowing like it used to, as it used to flow. And we've received numerous of the, numerous calls just like that. Hey, this area is not flowing like it used to flow. We went in there, opened the manhole, couldn't necessarily, couldn't, it looked like it was clear and, clear and go. But then what we did do is, we ran a piece of apparatus through it, and it got stuck. And then a second piece, and it got stuck, until the point where we had to take a tracko, a backhoe out there, dig a hole approximately where it was, punch a hole into it, get the portions of apparatus that we got stuck, and then also get clear. So although we couldn't see anything wrong, somehow a four-by-four got stuck in there. So as the four-by-four got stuck in there, it also clogged up farther back. So that, that's an example of some of the things you look, you do your due diligence, and hey, you don't see anything. But sometimes it's a matter of cleaning it, and also part of the cleaning would be to televise. Because just because, just because you say that you've done it, we want to have proof.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
That proof, by the way, would be essential to get reimbursement from FEMA. So without it, we're not going to get federal dollars back.
Get all the proof you can.
Yes, sir.
Is your camera back in operation yet, or is it done?
I actually, it, it is back. Sorry, I'm looking at Renee, for those of you who are wondering who I'm looking at in the audience. So yes, sir. So our, our next one is a Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District project that they've been working on. This is on the Trib Two, this is located at Spreading Oaks. Uh, this is looking downstream, and they've completed the boxes right there, heading downstream. They've actually, they had to tear open the road, and they, they have put the road back on Spreading Oaks. This is looking towards the terminus of the project. They anticipate having all the boxes in by the end of this week. They anticipate, uh, one question that I've received a little bit is on Castlewood. There's a asphalt portion, they have approximately 400 loads of dirt they need to have removed between basically where they're coming out on Castlewood. So once they've completed that operation, they'll be pouring that back, or they'll be re-asphalting that section. They anticipate having that complete by Memorial Day weekend. Yes, sir.
Are they able to use any of that dirt to fill in that ditch we're replacing? Will there still be an access?
Access to the, I mean, you, you'll have the.
Open ditch that this pipe is replacing.
Right, they should, they should have access to it.
I know, but will they have more dirt than is needed to fill that old ditch? And so those homeowners can reclaim their yards?
Yes, sir, they're, they're pulling, they're pulling out 400 loads, in addition to what they've already done.
Are they hauling it off, or they're giving it to those homeowners?
They're haul, they're hauling it off. I imagine if the homeowners wanted to use it, they, they could, provided they filled out a development permit. Or maybe I'm missing the question that you're asking.
The question, because with, with this project originally was conceived, one of the main things was to let those homeowners re, reclaim. Reclaim their property. The ditch that this pipe would replace. And I don't know why you would pay to haul it off when you can push it, you know, a couple hundred foot and, and make some homeowners happy and.
We can follow up with the Drainage District, that was the original intent when we met with them a few years ago. But as you well know, some of the Easeman acquisition wasn't as clean as the Drainage District had hoped, so I don't know if homeowners accepted the, the, the deal of filling in the ditch. But we can follow up with the Drainage District. And that's what I have, Joe.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Galveston County Bond Program, Rev?
Yes, sir.
Real quick, if council may recall, the last two, uh, meetings, we've had a discussion with regard to the Galveston County Bond Program that was voted on by the voters of Galveston County in November of this past year. In subsequent meetings, staff had met with representatives of the properties up and down Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, as well as commissioned a traffic impact analysis to see what impact, the connection to, um, FM 528 would bring. With the traffic study first, the results of it said that it would be a net positive to the city of Friendswood, that that would improve mobility and circulation throughout that region of Friendswood. So with that in mind, we went forward with our continued discussions with the property owners. At the last council meeting, you may recall, the proposal was each property owner, three property owners putting up, let me back up. Can you go to the next slide? On the screen before you is a scope of the project. It's, it's going to be a four-lane boulevard within a hundred-foot right-of-way, roughly 24 feet of paving on each side of the median, with the five-foot sidewalk on either side, and an escalator in the medium, in the middle. The estimated project cost for this is roughly 4.6 to 5.8 million, based on recent bids, both in West Ranch, both in Blackhawk, as well as other projects. Galveston County's bond program included a total of $3.57 million in bond proceeds, debt that the county would issue towards transportation improvements in Friendswood, on the Galveston County side of Friendswood. And then they offered another million dollars in matching. So for every dollar we put up on top of the 3.57, the county would match that, that dollar as well. As I mentioned earlier, we met with the property owners, and they've all agreed to dedicate the 100-foot of right-of-way, which equates to roughly 10.8 acres of land for the construction of this roadway. The previous meeting, the property owners had indicated that they would dedicate each 333,000 apiece for that million-dollar matching, but had requested reimbursement of 133,000 apiece. So it would be a total of $400,000 in terms of refund or rebate from the city of Friendswood. This current proposal, they just went back to the 200 apiece for the total of 600, plus the full right-of-way dedication. And the, the way it's drafted later on in the agenda is that the city would front the million-dollar match to get the project moving forward, and then the property owners would reimburse us each 200,000 apiece. We have discussed with Galveston County, and they're open to the concept that the city would not be billed, invoiced, or charged that million dollars until such time that the project has been bid, um, designed and bid. So we know of that million, what needs to be put forth. Our hopes are that with the developer contribution, that we won't have to put a penny forward, that the projects will come in 4.7 or less. Next slide. This is a breakdown of the, the funds on hand. 3.57 million from Galveston County in bond proceeds, $600,000 developer contribution, which would be fronted by the city of Friendswood, and then $600,000 of the matching funds from Galveston County for a total of 4.77 million. If the proceeds, if the project costs come in less than 4.77, the developers would get back a portion, pro rata share of their contribution. If it comes in higher, the city would be on the hook, um, for the difference. Project costs in excess of, go back one more. Project costs in excess of 4.7, still has room for matching with Galveston County. Obviously, if the developers are putting up 600,000, there's another 400,000 available. And as I mentioned, if they come in less than 4.7, then we'd reimburse the developers. They're here this evening, if you have any questions for them. With that, I turn it over for questions.
Councilmember Rocky, then Councilmember Foreman.
What's the value of the right-of-way that was given? That's a fluctuating topic. Obviously, the, the value is going to be of a great import to the developers, but without it, they're not able to access their property for development either. So it's, it's half a dozen in one and six in the other. Of concern to the city is, without the right-of-way dedication, the project costs far exceed anything we can hope. So, um, dedication is crucial to making this work financially. So that, that right-of-way, though, that they've given is, is of substantial value to the project. Correct. Okay, and then the second question is, and, and I think I'm just making sure that it's understood, is that if, if we have 600,000, which is matched by the county for 600,000, we have another 400,000 that we could get matched. So, so let's say the project came in 400,000 over the 4.77. We could put in 200,000, and the county would match it, and that would make that up, is that right? Correct.
My question is to follow up on Councilmember Rocky on that 600,000 that we put up to, to get matched early on, and then go back for up to 400,000 to be matched. Is there any time limit that, Galveston County has this money in a, in a pot somewhere? It's going to be available, and we don't have to worry about, uh, going back to them and they say, oh, sorry, you asked for 600, we gave you that, and that, now we're out of money, or any time constraints?
Sure, in, in short, the answer to that question is, no, there's not a concern. Simply put, the project would have already been designed and bid. So we know what the drive-out cost would be at that point, and then we'll know if we're committing 600, or if we're committing 800, or whatever the case may be. As I mentioned, this is going to be a reimbursement from the developer to the city. So if we end up putting up 800, then when the developer goes to build, they pay us back 200 apiece. So the, the county portion would be committed right when we're ready to pay.
Councilmember Gustafson?
What would the timing be on building this piece of the road?
Realistically, design would take anywhere from eight to 10 months, hopefully sooner, but knowing the way speed of things work.
And then, and then construct, then bidding is another.
Two months, advertised bidding.
And construction.
Probably, uh, seven to nine months, depending on weather.
So.
Two years.
A year and a half to two years.
Yes, sir.
Okay. What's, did the traffic study include any traffic coming in from League City?
It looked at, and, well, I'll defer to Patrick real quick because I don't have the study immediately in front of me. In short, I believe it did, but I'll.
I'm pretty sure it didn't.
Okay.
That's why I'm asking the question. What I read through, I didn't see it. It showed West Ranch is, is unbuilt and something to be done way off in the future, when in fact, that would probably be done almost in parallel with this work, wouldn't it?
There's a gap of approximately 1,500 feet from where Lake Friendswood bottom or south, southwestern corner of Lake Friendswood is located, toward the Travis Campbell property that currently is owned by a private developer that's got no track, uh, tax increment financing zone or any other ways to build it.
Okay.
League City hasn't indicated.
So there's still going to be a 1,500-foot gap, even if West Ranch finishes their piece of the road?
Unless Galveston County funds it, and so it's up to League City. This isn't the highest priority for League City when they submitted their list of projects to, to Galveston County, but that may, that may prove otherwise.
My concern is just getting a giant dump of traffic onto 528 that we haven't accounted for here. And that's it. So if I can be assured that's not a problem.
Sure.
The study doesn't take into account that it would go all the way to, uh, League City?
Yeah, that was my point. So I, I understand it may be a net benefit to local traffic in that area right now, but there's an awful lot of homes just on the other side there, and that, that's, and that 1,500-foot section of road is going to get built sooner rather than later, I would think. Okay.
Mr. Clark, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to tell you that that's 2,000, 2,000 millio feet. And the, uh, we're in discussions with the city on moving forward on that.
League City?
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, with League City as we speak. So their interest in, in connecting, um, to create circulation, so. They've not figured out what that looks like because the 2,000-foot project is somewhat small. We had originally hoped that possibly we could tie in with whoever's doing this, and they could just piggyback potentially that contract because they'd be the low bidder because they're already mobilized, and there'd be some synergy there, but time will tell. But I think from the discussions that I've had with the city of League City, they're, they're definitely interested in moving forward with or without the developer's participation. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So real, real quickly on the numbers, the potential is for 5.57 million, with the city having to chip in 400,000 of that, and the rest coming from the bond and the developers.
Correct, and it'll act as a reimbursement, but to the end of the day, yes.
Yes, so the additional 800,000 gets us to 5.57, of which the city will have put in 400,000 to do this project.
Correct.
And also to reiterate, it's not funded to connect to League City. There's that 15 or 2,000 linear feet that somebody else will have to pay.
And that's my understanding, but as Commissioner Clark just indicated, I wasn't aware of League City. Originally, when League City, when we met with them, this wasn't their highest priority. So, um, that is, that is new to me.
Okay, all right, good.
I have a question. I'm a little concerned about, I know there's going to be a lag time in we upfront, city gets reimbursed. Haven't we already been hit pretty hard with Hurricane Harvey? And we still have folks who aren't back in their homes yet. And if we have a potential buyout somewhere down the road, you know, there's got to be an end to this well of money that we have, so my concern would be, is this our highest priority right now? Or is it maybe the people who need to be getting back into their homes, or else helping them with the buyout situation? That'd be my concern. I'm all about leveraging the dollars, have been from the very beginning, and I'm all about that. But I am concerned about how much money do we really have to allocate for all these sort of things that we need to take care of? And I would think getting people back into their homes would be a high priority for us right now.
And ultimately, that'll be a, that priority decision will be that of city councils collectively. I will say that you'll see later on in my city manager's report that we are spending roughly 4.8 million, 4.7, 4.8 million in debris pickup, that we haven't been reimbursed yet by FEMA. We will get the money as we did in Ike, but it may take a little while. So, um, I'll defer to council on what the priority is going to ultimately be, but yes, that is a concern.
Any other comments?
Councilman Gustafson's concerned about the drive-in from League City. They're coming by my house every day already, and they either can go up 518 or cut through Falcon Ridge, which, uh, they're, they're coming already.
So we have two agenda items on this later to vote, right?
Correct. You have a development agreement and a subsequent inter-local agreement that's in draft format with Galveston County. If you do not approve the development agreement, I would suggest you hold off on the inter-local agreement. You have two items later on this evening, a development agreement with the property owners, and then the next item is an inter-local agreement with Galveston County for this project. If the development agreement's not approved, I would suggest holding off on the inter-local agreement. Simply put, we would be committing dollars that we're not guaranteed we're getting back.
Okay. Item six, closed executive session. Is there anything we want to move up on the agenda first? We've got an hour and a half.
Except C, and they won't be here until seven.
The city manager's report's kind of lengthy. We may be here till seven.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, no. Yeah, I must say, in prior months, Roger always asked staff for items for the city manager report, and they were slim pickings, but this month, they didn't hold back.
Welcome.
Yes. Recently, the city held its annual spring sparkle event. There was a great turnout, as there always is, but with Harvey, obviously, there's greater concern by folks to take care of some of their spring cleaning. We had a total of five hundred and forty-five cars and trucks come through, and Waste Connections hauled off more than forty-four tons of waste, compacted waste, and another fifty-three tons of roll-off waste. The garage sale that, folks that did not throw items away but gave them over to KFB to have a garage sale and raise funds for beautification efforts, brought in seven hundred and eighty-three dollars, and those proceeds will, as obvious, as I mentioned, will benefit our facilities and our parks. Our sponsors this year were the city of Friendswood, KFB, Waste Connections, Clear the Air, JSC Credit Union, and Sonic. Here in a few weeks, we will have our annual Memorial Day ceremony, May twenty-ninth at ten a.m. here over here at the Veterans Memorial next to City Hall. The ceremony will always include patriotic music and songs and tributes to the flags and a special guest speaker that I have not been told who that speaker is just yet, but it is a very somber and fitting ceremony, befitting the veterans of our community and throughout the nation. Bagpipe guy?
The bagpipe guy coming?
Yes. Yes, he is. This past Friday, we started our annual Mitch and Artha Wright Concerts in the Park series with Friendswood Jazz Band. These concerts will continue each Friday night through the month of May and June, beginning approximately at seven p.m. and ending around nine p.m. The, this coming week and the weeks following will include pop, rock, funk, Latin, blues, and zydeco music. We encourage our residents to come out with blankets and refreshments and just enjoy the family atmosphere that's going on here at Stevenson Park. I read these words, but we're starting hurricane season here in the month of June. I know it hasn't been that, we haven't been that far removed from Hurricane Harvey hitting us, but each year, the Texas Division of Emergency Management and National Weather Service officials gather to discuss Hurricane preparedness week in the state of Texas, which is May sixth through the twelfth. This is a great time to remind our residents to be prepared for the upcoming storm. In years past, we'd always remind folks to get their emergency packs ready together so they can leave if they need to. I promise some of y'all, some of you on council, that I'm going to become very annoying, but I would like to encourage our residents to do not have flood insurance, to get flood insurance well in advance of hurricane season, even if you are not in a floodplain. It's something that will prove very crucial should a flood occur. The Office of Emergency Management will be hosting annual hurricane response meeting in the Public Safety Building on May twenty-fourth. They're already meeting with various organizations at the library and HOAs to encourage them to be prepared for the upcoming hurricane season. Keep Friendswood Beautiful's having their annual Facebook photo contest. The entries are being accepted. Well, they've already closed. It was between April sixteenth and May fourth. We've received a number of photo entries through Facebook and social media. They have, Keep Friendswood Beautiful and the Parks Department plan on announcing winners at the Schools Out for Summer concert this upcoming, well, June first concert in the park. EMS, our emergency medical services, is offering a Safe Sitter Essentials program. And as Assistant Chief Roy Hunter mentioned to me right before this meeting, they've had an overabundance of interest in this program to where they're already full for their Safe Sitter program. What this is, is they work with local youth that are interested in getting into babysitting services, going over the safety essentials and what they need to be prepared for before offering that services. Anybody interested is encouraged to send an email to Assistant Chief Roy Hunter. Do you want your cell phone number out there, too? I'm joking. But no, this is a great program that helps the youth in this community be prepared as they're providing babysitting services. The election contest, recently, the appeals court ruled in the favor of the city of Friendswood and affirmed both, affirmed the lower court's decision in regard to our May twenty-sixteen election that was contested. At this time, the city is awaiting further decision from the appeals court. The contestants filed a motion for rehearing, so are working on a response to that motion.
Mo, could you tell us what the cost, overall costs I have been for this?
To date, we've spent approximately one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in legal fees, and the first quarter of lost revenue when the election contest was first filed is roughly four hundred thousand plus. So over half a million dollars in this election contest. Hurricane Harvey, as you know, council, that we had applied for a Texas Water Development Board Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant back in October, November of last year. The buyout program was not approved by FEMA, but subsequent to that, the city is working with Jeff Warden Associates and our residents impacted by the flood on a hazard mitigation grant application for buyouts and elevation assistance as well as mitigation reconstruction. This particular grant program has a different cost threshold than the prior one. It's a seventy-five percent federal and twenty-five percent local match. We do not have the funds on hand to do the twenty-five percent local match, as it may be a bit costly. Unlike the previous program, however, the threshold for meeting the cost-benefit analysis requirements from, for the feds are a little bit higher, and so not all the folks that are interested may be qualified, but we're meeting with them individually to determine their interest and pursue assistance as best as possible.
Could you just give us, you have an idea of the homes that are waiting to see if we can get a buyout? If we were to have to cover that twenty-five percent, about what, do you have a ROM on that number for us?
Yes. If we were to just maintain our initial application of forty-four homes, you may recall, our local match there was one point two million. It would be about three point five to four million dollars.
It's a big check for the city of Friendswood.
We are notifying our homeowners that are interested in this program to be prepared to cover the twenty-five percent themselves if they're interested in not knowing what funds we will have to commit for that effort. In addition to the individual assistance provided through the hazard mitigation grant program, we are evaluating a couple of regional drainage projects that we can leverage local dollars with federal dollars to improve drainage in the older parts of towns, more specifically the areas that do not currently have a detention pond that were built before there were substantial drainage criteria. On a positive front, I did get notice from Terry Burt, our Fire Marshal and Emergency Management Coordinator, that the state is working with Galveston County on a state of Texas assistance request relative to Clear Creek. The Corps of Engineers is looking at dredging Dickinson Bayou and have been asked to look at Clear Creek as well, so we may get some federal assistance in the coming months on getting some of the muck out of Clear Creek and help the flow of, flow of that particular creek. As always, I'm skeptical, but fingers crossed, hopefully, we can get some help from the On the debris fund, relative to, yes, sir.
Mo, just going back to the city's share in these buyout programs, you know, when we first submitted the package, we were willing to find the ten percent, the one point two million. And granted, if this other package works out and somebody's on the hook for twenty-five percent, let's not forget that we were willing to pony up ten percent. We got one point two million that we'll find, and we can help out. It's not all or nothing on that twenty-five percent. I think, you know, we'll find that. Whether or not we can come up with a full three point two to cover twenty-five percent is a different story, I know, but let's not forget that we, we're willing to pay one point two million, so...
As we meet with residents and we start formulating what the application will look like, I'll bring an item back to y'all for consideration. But since that's a moving target right now, I'm not comfortable bringing that figure to you. On the debris fund, as you know, we've stopped debris picking up debris services last November, December timeframe. Waste Connections, our disposal provider, has done some sweeps in the hardest-hit parts of town in the months of February and March. Obviously, though, there are, there's still some in Forest Bend, Quakers Landing, Poly Ranch that still need help, and I've left off a few subdivisions, not intentionally. But at the last council meeting, we had a workshop with Waste Connections and talked about options, various options moving forward. The city has partnered with Waste Connections, and we'll be doing a sweep in all the areas that were heavily hit and picking up anything and everything that they have at the curb. As you all know, the material that's occurred today is a lot of construction, reconstruction material, and those type items are not reimbursable from the feds, but we're partnering with Waste Connections up to fifteen thousand dollars each to pick up additional debris and do another sweep. This go-around, though, we will notify residents beforehand with a social media blast, with phone calls, with door hangers to encourage them to get their stuff out to the curb, and hopefully, this will provide the assistance that those folks need. Afterwards, Waste Connections is willing to work with homeowners individually. For the cost of three hundred bucks, they'll send a claw truck to their house and pick up everything. So if the May and June sweeps don't help, they'll have other opportunities to get debris hauled off.
That's a fair price.
And just as a reminder, that this is the responsibility of your contractor rebuilding your homes, and we understand a number of homeowners are doing it, their own contracting work to help save some costs, but if you do have a contractor, please remind them of their responsibility. Finally, with respect to financing, I mentioned earlier, the city has been invoiced four point seven...
Mo?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I got a question. If you've got a couple, three homeowners in a, in a, in an area that are doing this, do we have rules about allowing those roll-offs to sit out in the street for a couple of weeks?
We will work with homeowners, provided it's not an obstruction of getting emergency vehicles down...
Ideally, they put it in a driveway.
Yes. With respect to debris, the city has been invoiced a total of four point seven million dollars for debris removal and monitoring services, and to date, has paid two point, four point three million, or four point two, three million. We've been reimbursed one point three million, but we're quickly processing invoice and reimbursement requests to, to the feds. We've estimated...
Are you getting dollar for dollar back?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then on the building permit side, you may recall, we had twenty-seven hundred homes impacted by Harvey. We've issued twenty-six hundred and seventy-seven permits to date, including building, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, demo, and trailers. This is on top of our standard workload, so our folks are running ragged. Y'all have any questions? Yes.
The meeting that was held, what, two weeks ago now? Could you, could you give us an update on that?
Thank you for reminding me. On April twenty-fourth, the city, in conjunction with Jeff Warden Associates, had a public forum to discuss the hazard mitigation grant program and go over what the project eligibility requirements would be and answer questions for folks. We had well over three hundred folks in attendance, standing room only, and we were there for three plus hours, but I think it was very well, it was very well received by the residents that needed the assistance. Patrick and Brian continued to meet with homeowners individually, following that meeting, to get them in the program that best fits them. Still not a guarantee that they will get qualified, and if they get qualified, if we'll get funding from the feds, but we're trying to provide them as much assistance as possible.
Any other questions? I don't see anything else we can move up unless the consent agenda. Steve, you wanted to pull some things on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda first? Or you want to make a motion and remove?
I'd like to have a couple of items pulled off the consent agenda just for information for the audience.
Put on your microphone, please.
Thank you. D, E, H, I, and N.
Do I hear a motion? I'll make a motion.
So this is to approve the rest of the agenda, other than that?
Correct. Yeah. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? So we'll address D, E, H, I, and N. You want to do it now or later?
We can do it now. Go ahead. With respect to item D and E, if council will allow, we'll take those up concurrently.
And there's a buyout license on 502 and 504 Falling Leaf and 1202 Myrtle Wood.
Correct. Following Tropical Storm Allison, the city applied for a hazard mitigation grant program in two thousand and two and received funds to purchase one hundred and thirty-eight buyout lots. So one hundred and thirty-eight homes were removed from the floodplain back in two thousand and two. As you can expect, the cost to maintain those properties, once the homes are removed, falls on the shoulder of the city, and it gets kind of expensive between removing trash and other debris that people like to dump, or cutting the grass, or taking down dead trees. So historically, the city is a, has developed a program in which we'll license with neighboring properties, property owners that are interested, in which they can expand their backyard in exchange, for free, in exchange for maintaining these lots, cutting the grass and taking care of, taking care of it as if it were their yard. 502 and 504 Falling Leaf, the homeowner that previously did that license has since moved away, and a new homeowner's looking to license those two lots on Falling Leaf. With respect to 1202 Myrtle Wood, this one's adjacent to the intersection of Myrtle Wood and Steel Drive. That homeowner's wanting to license to maintain the lot next to them that's bought out, but in addition to that, that homeowner flooded during Harvey and has decided to tear their home down and build a new one. So they would like to use the portion of the buyout lot that's in the AE with their house to mitigate the dirt requirement. So if they're bringing in dirt to build a new higher house, elevated house, they want to take some of the dirt out of the buyout lot, which is permissible with the deed requirements that the feds grant.
And nothing can be built on those lots, right? It can just be used for playgrounds or whatever?
Correct.
Okay.
No permanent structures?
No permanent structures. On item H, H and I, periodically, the city has to go out for bids, and Brian, our deputy director of the Fire Marshal's Office and Emergency Management's walking up. These are our routine bids for debris services, and you want to give some background?
Yes, the ones you pulled were for debris monitoring or debris management services, which are debris removal, and also for our meal catering. We do come to the, do these pre-event disaster event contracts fairly often. The reason why you see so many out before us is because all the ones that got used during Harvey had to be rebid to meet some new language for the federal procurement. So that's why you have so many in front of you today.
And then, lastly, item N, it's a donation, and yes...
Is there anything we can put in these contracts that demands these people show up when they're supposed to? I mean, do they post bonds, or are we at their will that they'll show up when they want to and are getting paid more somewhere else?
The ones that we had did show up when they were supposed to, but the ones that did not answer our phone calls, we did not, we're not suggesting entering contracts with them again.
There was about a two-week lag with nobody showing up. And there's no way to address that?
Um, yes, sir. But they do have bonds. The ones that we had on contract here never left, though, so they had presence here during the whole, the whole time.
Let me see if I can ask Councilman Field's question a little different way, because same issue, same concern. Can we require them to produce immediately upon call a certain number of trucks?
We can try to. We have not addressed the...
I mean, there's nothing in, I mean, if they showed up with one truck, technically... I mean, if they showed up with one truck, technically, they're meeting the terms of the contract, as I understand it. And I may be wrong about that, but at this point, we should have some fair idea what a required number of trucks to be making some sort of dentness is.
It's going to depend on the magnitude of the event. In this particular case, unfortunately, Harvey far expanded the confines of Galveston County and the city of Friendswood. And then with Maria hitting Florida a couple of weeks later, it really impacted our ability to respond.
And I don't mean to be harsh about it, but I'm sorry that all happened in Florida, but I'm up here representing the people that live in this city. And we signed a contract, they said they'd be here.
What we... And we can definitely add those contract provisions in there and re-advertise for proposal. The difficulty, and you'll see later on in item P on consent that was just approved, we went out for an RFP, for a request for proposals for emergency equipment for these storms, and we got zero responses. Some of these services are going to be harder and harder to come by, especially due to the magnitude and the frequency of these events. So staff is more than willing to go back and re-advertise, but we may not get responses.
I understand, and we're a smaller city, too. I just, I wonder if there's... I don't know if there's an opportunity to partner with other localities in the area that make it a somewhat more attractive contract to bid.
We can look at that.
I'm just up here thinking.
Most of these services have contracts throughout the county with other agencies, and some further north in areas didn't meet the requirements.
And I want to be real clear, I think you guys did everything you were supposed to do, and it was really the contractors, I understand. It was a rather extraordinary set of circumstances, both prior to what hit here and then right after what hit here.
I can assure you, we met with the debris removal and monitoring services the day after Harvey hit. We had them in Terry's office, and we met with them. It just, it takes a while for them to mobilize, and a lot of times, these groups are contracting with subcontractors to provide drivers and equipment because...
They turned around and went back to Florida.
They did, and to Crowder's benefit, they purchased brand-new trucks and had them delivered to Friendswood as opposed to any of their other clients, so I do commend them for that.
That was a tough time.
Yep. And God willing, we don't have to go through that anytime soon.
So we need to make a motion to approve those?
There's one other item, item N. A local of art enthusiasts have offered to donate a piece of art. To give you some perspective, and James is there, definitely can answer any questions, it's approximately seven or eight feet high.
Seven feet, yes, sir.
This particular piece of art is proposed to go at the intersection of Shadwell and FM 518 in Stevenson Park. Keep Friendswood Beautiful and the Parks Department are in favor of its location and feel it'd be a nice asset to the community. What's the dollar amount on?
It's an $11,000 project.
Donated.
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 I like how you photoshopped it.
And it is of substance. Should kids choose to climb on it, it's not... I mean, that's a pretty hefty steel structure.
It is, and staff will do the concrete footers. We will put those in place according to engineer specifications.
This isn't the statue I promised you, John, so... But we can put your head on one of them.
And this is... This was an idea and a donation, but we're not, like, setting some precedent that we're going to accept art donations from anybody here, are we?
Each of them would have to come to council for acceptance, but we, the Parks Department and Keep Friendswood Beautiful are working on a set of criteria to develop so that we have a little bit more due process involved in making these determinations on what's accepted and what's not accepted, so there will be a process. Unfortunately, this donation request came in before that policy was in place, but we're working on one.
Do I have a motion for the pulled items off the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All opposed? Closed executive session. Executive conference room adjacent to council chamber, City Hall. A, communications from the public regarding executive session topics. B, council may convene into executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code pursuant to Section 551.087. Deliberation regarding economic development negotiations to deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect with possible discussion and action related thereto in open session. And Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property with possible discussion and action related thereto in open session. We're going to reconvene back into open session. I'm going to start with communication. I have to do that at 7, right?
The rules of procedure say as close to 7:00 as possible, or if you want, or you can do the library recognition first.
Yes, what is the young lady's name?
Rebecca Poole.
Presentation of the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association, Rebecca Poole, 2017 Achievement of Library Excellence Award by Rebecca Poole, Library Director at Deer Park Public Library and past president of TMLDA.
Good evening, council members. I'm Rebecca Poole. I'm with the Deer Park Public Library, and I am here representing the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association. And at this time, I'd like to present the 2017 Achievement of Excellence in Library Awards to the Friendswood Public Library. There have been a... I will give you a couple of statistics. Of the 548 public libraries in Texas, 52 qualified for this award this year. So that puts the Friendswood Public Library in the top 10% of all libraries in the state. They were very busy during fiscal year 2017. They assisted over 180,000 customers. They circulated over 340,000 books, magazines, audiobooks, DVDs, CDs, and other items. They provided meeting space for 2,508 meetings, presentations, and study groups last year alone. So there's always something happening at the library, and that's what I always like to say. So at this time, I'd like to present the 2017 Achievement of Excellence in Library Awards to Mary Peroni, the Library Director, and I believe she has a couple of staff members here.
We're going to have a party.
That's right.
This is Karen Hart, who's my assistant, and Matt Riley is the Assistant Library Director. This is Diane Freeman, who is on our library board and our friend. And this is Ted Thomas, also on our library board, and Mike Sarwitz, who is the President of the library board.
Let's give him a round of applause. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All of you. Move on to item nine, communication from the public. To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizens' comment period. Ted Thomas was the first one.
It's something I promised myself I'd never do again after I retired 25 years ago, and I speak in public. But I thought I'd announce to everybody, a young lady named Lisa Copeland Trout, who graduated with my daughter in 1981 from Friendswood High School, is the proud owner of Justify, the horse that just won the Kentucky Derby.
Austin Hill.
Hello, my name is Austin Hill, and I live on 917 Sunset. Twelve years ago, two great things happened. My grandfather was elected to city council, and I started first grade. One of us was unopposed. He came here to do what was best for Friendswood. He was joined by a great council with similar goals for all these years. Shortly after, he would come see me play tee ball at Rinwick. When there was no place to park, he went to work with staff, and now we have a parking lot along Stadium Drive. A few years later, as he watched me play Broncos football at Centennial Park, he found this again. He worked with the school board to complete the parking for the park while getting the Mustang painted on the water tower. He also saw the need for more fields at Centennial and the city land that needed to be graded. He did all the grading work himself at no cost to the city. Just a few years ago, he graded the entire lacrosse field at the old junior high. Now, that was in August, and over 100 loads of dirt. The lacrosse coach stayed with him and gave him water anytime he would take it, all for free. It was what was best for Friendswood. My grandfather would pick me up from school, and we would drive around to see all the projects that the city was working on. It wasn't until my wind song days that I figured out Sonic wasn't a city project, because that was always our first stop. Through his terms, here are just a few of the great things our city council and staff achieved that some may not remember. Opening a county tax office here at City Hall. TV cameras to allow citizens to watch city council. Complete replacement of Deepwood Sewer Lift Station. Completion of downtown drainage improvements. Replacement of Melody Lane, Sunny View, Sky View, and Shadow Bend. Mud Gully Retention Project. The securing of federal funds for Fire Station 3 on Forest Bend. A new animal shelter, new fire stations, securing the entire water requirement for the build-out of Friendswood, and lower taxes. Some of the more personal achievements that were accomplished are the Veterans Memorial next to City Hall. Saving the West Ranch project by working with landowner holdouts even on the steps of City Hall. This led to our new junior high and Centennial Park. The fast-track approval of developers through city regulations. Successfully winning two county bond elections that brought back county dollars to Friendswood. The one he is most proud of, aside from Mo being hired, took 12 years to see it through. Countless negotiation gave one of our city's most beautiful treasures, Lake Friendswood. This took years of working with landowners, city staff, and developers. I truly believe this is his favorite one. My great-grandfather brought his wife and seven kids to Friendswood in 1946 with all they owned in the back of that old truck. They settled a couple of hundred yards from where my grandfather lives today. Friendswood is home. When home was hurting after Ike and Harvey, he immediately used his own equipment to clear roads. He met at the city's point of distribution with his forklift to unload supplies for volunteers to distribute for days. During Harvey, he could not get out for a few days, so at 6:00 AM, he called my dad and I and said, "City needs us. Take your boat and go home." He said, "Call Mo, he'll tell you where to go." That day, we rescued hundreds, even my own uncle not even knowing that he had flooded. The very moment he could get out, he commandeered a city dump truck and began to rescue several others himself. You know, my grandfather has always said, "Don't watch what we say, watch what we do." He has always been a leader by example. Now, on city council and in life, there are those who may not have totally agreed, have totally agreed with him, or stayed for what he saw was best for Friendswood. I can assure you that you were confronted and reminded of this, but one thing I know is a fact, you will always know where you stand with Jim Hill. He is honest as the day is long and a straight shooter. So now, as we both move forward, as I graduate from high school and he returns to a normal citizen, he can walk away knowing he won four elections and only drew one opponent. He, along with council and staff, have left this city far better than what it was. He will leave it with character and integrity, just as the way he lives. I can only leave him with this. Papa, as I have listened to what you have said and have learned from what all of you've done, I will take it with me every day. You have no doubt always done what is right for Friendswood. We all thank you for the countless hours and your deep love for our hometown. Congratulations on 12 years of great service.
All I can say is I'm glad I'll be off before that kid has to run against me. James Gurlin?
I just want to briefly, tonight, Jim Gurlin, tonight I noticed that on the agenda, item 13, you're going to be talking about the possible extension of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard to join Lake City Parkway. I've lived here for 38 years, and I've spent more dollars, sales tax dollars, outside this city than inside this city. It's because we don't have the commercial base. And I know that a lot of our forefathers didn't really want that. They wanted it to remain a bedroom community, you know? But a bedroom community in definition is a city that's located next to a major city that offers jobs and employment. We've evolved, and the city's movement out to us. We've got adjoining cities that offer a lot more from a commercial standpoint. Pearland and Lake City, they have 4B sales tax. We do not. I did meet with Sally Branson and Harold Whitaker, David Smith, and Jerry Erickson and myself, and with Ken Clark before this bond election. And I know that we got a sharp end of the stick on that deal, but it is what it is. Harold's reservation about that being punched out there versus going on the north side is the traffic that it would create on 518. And that's kind of what I wanted to talk about or mention. 518, when I had the store Jimmy G's, we shut it down 22 years ago, roughly. And Jack Weber and I became friends, grocery men talked to grocery men, it's like being in the military, and, you know, there's a camaraderie amongst us. And Jack said, "Jim, 42% of my business comes from Lake City." 42%. Well, that 42% probably goes to work the same way they go if they're working in Nassau. And that's where Leisure Lane with that Chick-fil-A, they were coming out talking about how everybody's cutting through Leisure Lane to get back to 520. If that road's cut through, I've got a study that Murad had received back in 2006 from Tech dot, when they were on the program of doing this road, that shows about 13,000 people would dump out in 2020 on 520. Murad thinks that study needs to be redone and thinks it could be greater. And a lot of that, probably when they're speculating and projecting, depends on economics and stuff like that, with how long the economy is going to stay strong enough to put rooftops on the ground. I do know this, and you all are aware of this, that some of the landowners have been approached about donating some money to see that this road gets punched through, and I think it's desperately needed, and I hope that you guys consider that. Also, too, from a commercial standpoint, I've talked to several of the commercials, because I'm a commercial realtor now, and I've talked to the pizza place and those guys, and they're just not doing it right now. Talked to Master Zoffy before I came over here, and he's really struggling. He actually lost business by moving down there to Friendswood Lakes. That little mile, 1.1 mile, made a difference for some of his client base, you know? And he said, "I really need that road through, because that would take and pull more traffic back there." We have had Kroger under contract for almost three years this June for that location. Now, I did a price structure almost two years ago. HEB here was higher than the one at Pearland Parkway. Could that be because at that time Kroger was scraping ground at Pearland Parkway to build a store, and now that all that stopped? Maybe they were trying to establish a price image. I don't know, but when this store knows they've got a captive market, and this is their 25th most profitable store, they do over $1,008,000 a week, because two of my assistant managers went to work for them. Thank you.
Kristin Pearson? Christine, I'm sorry. Christine?
That's okay, it looks like Kristin. Hi, for those who don't know me, my name is Christine Pearson. We had a flooded home, 13 Haverford. My family and I moved here with my mother and two children five years ago. We bought our home, it backs up to Clear Creek, and we spent close to or over, I would say, $100,000 in renovations, expecting to live there in say, $100,000 in renovations, expecting to live there until we retired. We did take on between four and five feet of water raging through our home. Everyone had horrible experiences with Harvey. Ours was slightly different in that the current raged, raged through our home, it forced open our back doors, it forced our furniture out our front door down the street. We were there when it happened. My children left on kayaks. My son's kayak capsized in 15 feet of water and it's by the grace of God that he didn't die. The home was destroyed. My husband and I cleaned out our 401Ks in order to buy another home. We are financially broken as so many people in Friendswood are. We do qualify for the buyout. We also potentially could get more money if we sold to an investor. On my conscience, I could not sell our home to an investor who sold it to another family who potentially could have children living there when it floods again, and it will flood again. So we definitely are interested in the buyout. We are grateful for the 75% federal dollars. We are not unreasonable. We understand there's no way the city could come up with a 25% city share of such a vast amount of money. So we have a solution. We understand that raising taxes won't work and that bonds probably won't work, but for those that opt to take the buyout and relocate in Friendswood, give them a reprieve on their property taxes for as many years as it takes to add up to that 25%. There's no way the city will have 25% in one full swoop to make good for those owners, but it's something. And then Friendswood comes out smelling like a rose. Thank you very much.
Item 10, communication from committees and special reports. A, Anna Report from the Fourth of July Steering Committee, Vice Chair Barbara Blanchard.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. It is my pleasure to represent the Fourth of July Steering Committee again this year. On Wednesday, July 4th, the committee and the city of Friendswood will proudly present the 123rd Fourth of July Celebration. This year's theme is Friendswood Strong. The day begins at 10:00 AM with our grand parade. It features more than 100 entries from Friendswood and around the state. This year, we will be honoring, as our parade grand marshals, all first responders, fire, police, EMS, FISD employees, all state staff, and numerous other organizations, excuse me, that continue to help our community. And last but not least, the citizens who set aside their own personal safety to help their fellow man. Their bravery and outstanding efforts to our community and surrounding areas during Hurricane Harvey are unforgettable to us all. After the parade in Stevenson Park, there will be rides, games, food, live entertainment, and more than 50 booths until 3:30 PM. The evening program at Centennial Park kicks off at 7:30. Starting at 6:30, there will be free shuttle service to the park from Friendswood High School and Friendswood United Methodist Church. The headline evening entertainment will be Chinatown, followed by a fantastic fireworks extravaganza, choreographed, of course, to patriotic music. For more information to sign up to have a, be in the parade or have a booth at Stevenson Park, please contact the Parks and Recreation Department at 281-996-3220. We would like to thank this year's 2018 committee members, Chair Tommy McDonald, Anthony, Christine, Michelle, and Stacy Scarpa, Daryl Fails, Rafino Ramirez, Terry Corbett, Kathy Molenaro, and Renee Rives. The Friendswood Chamber of Commerce liaison is Lisi Woltz. City council liaison is Mr. John Scott. And from the Parks and Recreation Department, Director James Tony and his staff, Kimberly Ramirez, Heather Whitty, Katie Blanchard, Michael Boyett, Gary Williams, and all the Parks and Public Works crew members. And I am Barbara Blanchard, Vice Chair of the Steering Committee, and I'd like to thank you for giving me these few minutes. Hope to see y'all there. Thank you.
Give everybody our thanks, Barbara.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 12, discussion and possible action regarding approving a Chapter 380 Business Incentive Grant application for economic development with Thanos Land Holding for 505 South Friendswood Drive and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
The proposed building and grant is at 505 South Friendswood Drive, as you mentioned. It's a 63,400 square foot building, four stories, valued at $10 million and the, it's estimated that the city would receive about $52,700 annually of property tax revenue. That's excluding the business personal property or sales tax and about 200 jobs it would create. The grant consists of a two-tier grant, if you want me to explain that, so the public will understand as well. The first tier would be $50,000 after the building is constructed and their CO or Certificate of Occupancy is issued. And then the second tier would be 50,000 after occupancy of the businesses and at least half of the building that's leased out.
Any questions? Seeing none? Oh, John Scott.
Yeah, so just, just a point of clarification for the public. The money that would be paid out, we paid out half upfront, or half after the Certificate of Occupancy and then the other half after the 50% of the building is leased out. The tax revenue generated by the improvements put on the property will pay back that money in two years. So it's, it's, I applaud the city for going forward with the grant. I applaud the city for incentivizing any small businesses or businesses in general. But just wanted to point out, I'm voting against it because I do not like the appearance of the building and I've not seen any renderings changing that to match anything that we have going on downtown. I don't think a four-story building across from the Friends Church in the middle of our bedroom community really suits what, what I represent. So I, again, I'm all for the incentives, I'm all for everything that we've done, but I will not be voting for it because of that.
Any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, discussion and possible action regarding approval of a development agreement related to the construction of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Counsel, as we discussed earlier tonight, you have a development agreement before you that equates to the city funding approximately a million of dollars towards Galveston County's bond program to construct Friendswood Lake Boulevard. The development agreement is with three property owners along that alignment for Friendswood Lakes and would consist of reimbursement to the city up to $600,000 plus the full right-of-way donation. Representatives of the property owners are here this evening if you have any questions more specifically to them. As I mentioned before, this item plus the subsequent one work in tandem, so if there isn't a resolution to this item, I would recommend tabling the next item. Any questions?
Councilmember Rocky. So this is, this is the item that we talked about earlier, correct?
Yes, sir.
Could you go through the numbers again because there's people in the audience that weren't here.
Sure. And if, Jeff, if you could, could you put the PowerPoint presentation back up? Patrick, if you can go through the slides.
Earlier this evening during the workshop session of the council meeting, we had a, the discussion with regard to Friendswood Lakes Boulevard. The map on the screen shows Friendswood Lakes Boulevard depicted by those two yellow stars of where it currently ends in West Ranch and where it currently ends in Sterling Creek. Next slide. The project would consist of a 100-foot right-of-way, four-lane boulevard with an esplanade in the middle and five-foot sidewalks on either end. Based on current project costs in West Ranch as well as the Black Hawk Road Reconstruction Project, we estimate the cost for building that roadway anywhere from 4.6 to 5.8 million, inclusive of engineering, surveying, and contingencies. Galveston County recently held a bond election in this past November in which they allocated $3.57 million to the city of Friendswood for transportation improvements in Friendswood, the Galveston County side. In addition to the bond proceeds, they're willing to dedicate a million dollars in matching funds, one for one. If the city puts up a dollar, they'll put up a matching dollar, in essence equating up to 5.57 million total. The developers that I mentioned earlier are willing to dedicate a 100-foot right-of-way for the distance of the roadway, which equates to roughly 10.8 acres. Each developer is willing to contribute $200,000 for a total of $600,000 that would be reimbursed to the city once the project is complete and they're tying into it. So looking at the Galveston County bond proceeds of 3.57 plus $600,000 from the developers and $600,000 in matching from Galveston County, our estimated funding available is 4.77 million. The city has not out any funds except for funding the cost in, under this scenario. If the project comes in in excess of 4.77, the city would be on the hook for anything above $4.77 million. We have $400,000 in available matching funds from Galveston County. If it comes in less than the developers would be due reimbursement, they're pro-adess share for whatever it comes in less of 4.77, as outlined in the development agreement as drafted. Any questions?
Would you also mention the timing that you spent?
Sure. If we were to approve it this evening, Galveston County obviously would have to have an opportunity to review the development, the interlocal agreement and act on it at Commissioner's Court. Engineering and surveying and design would take approximately six to nine months, depending on how quickly they can roll it out. Another two months worth of bid advertising awards, so advertising for construction, and then probably another six to nine months, if not a year, for construction, depending on weather. So a year and a half to two years, most likely.
Thank you, Mo. Any other discussion?
I would just like to reiterate what I said during the workshop area is that if we are spending money on this, then if we do have homeowners who want us to meet them somewhere along the way on the 7525, we, we also have been spending money on the debris pickup and things like that. So I don't know how much we still have available to put towards this, and I don't know if it would come at the cost of helping out our homeowners. So I'm just, in that regard, I feel like our homeowners take priority here versus the road. So for that reason, I will not be supporting this.
I'd like to make a motion to table this. There's, I want to talk to the developer a little bit about this. I'd like to talk to the property owners. And I'd, I'd really like to study what the impact's going to be, you know, the, the bit with the buyout. I'd just like another month to make the call. I'm not, fundamentally, I'm not, I'm not opposed to building the road. It needs to be built, but I just want to make sure I completely understand how all the pieces are going to go together, and I don't think I have that right now. We have a motion to table. Do we have a second? We have a motion to table and a second. All those in favor of tabling? All those opposed? Motion fails.
The developers' representatives are here this evening if you want to talk to them about their proposal and see if there's any opportunity to, for additional assistance.
I'd like to ask you, though, if we, if we just don't take any action on the item, it can come back next month, right?
Correct. And if, for whatever reason...
As opposed to tabling it, right?
Yes, sir.
It'd be a more prudent way to postpone it for a month is to take no action, which would require somebody to take back their motion or, or whatever. Or we could not take action on the next item.
Correct.
And it would do the same thing.
Correct.
I made the motion correct? Withdraw the second. We have a motion and a second. I understand the concerns of council. This is a tough place to be when you're a developer, when you're a city. We've done the traffic study, we've gotten good results. The landowners have stepped up to the plate. I am concerned about the Harvey money, though, as far as cash flow. And I don't think I have all the answers. Mo, how much have we spent with Harvey right now?
We've expended roughly $4.233 million in debris pickup, and that's just counting debris, debris pickup and monitoring services. There are obviously costs beyond that and personnel for working the event as well as forced labor for protective measures for our facilities that went underwater. We're due reimbursement, but as we learned in Ike, there's no guarantee when those funds are going to come back. Thankfully, this council has been very prudent in prior councils in making sure we had an emergency reserve in place, but that will only go so far.
What's our beyond 90-day?
Our 90-day is roughly 5.67 million, but we're well into that right now with debris pickup. And then above 90-day, we had roughly 2.1 million, if I remember correctly. Well, we've done some spending tonight, but prior to tonight, 2.1 million.
Councilmember Rocky?
Yeah, just answering a couple of these comments. First of all, this road is not disconnected from flooding. Part of what we talked about in flooding is being able, not only to deal with the flooding and prevent it, but also to be able to get around town when it does happen. And this road does give us something that helps us get around town. And talking about the money, if I read these numbers right, the worst the city could be out would be another $400,000. We have $500,000 that we budget every year for street maintenance. We could put, we could put that toward it, and $400,000 is fairly small compared to what we're going to get for this road. So, and, and, you know, we, we, the county has, the citizens spoke and voted, voted for this road with the county. I feel like we, now is the time we got to push it through. The other thing I'd like to say is, while it's, it's, it's not mentioned monetarily, the amount of right-of-way these landovers gave us, which was 10 acres, is substantial amount of money that they've ponied up. So, so I think they've, I think they've given blood for this project and I think it's time to move it forward and just go with it. It's, it's not that significant on the overage that we would have to do and there's a good chance it'll come in on budget and we won't have to deal that. And, and on top of that, this is two years on the payout. So we have a couple of years we can accrue that money in our budget if we need to.
Councilmember Foreman?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Rocky on this. This is a road that, that we need. This is going to benefit all of Friendswood, not just the developers, not just the property owners, people trying to get around Friendswood, new commercial development like Mr. Gerlin spoke on. So, Mo, tell us one more time when we would have to cut our first check to Galveston County?
If the interlocal is approved by council and subsequently by Galveston County in the same form that it's written, approximately 10 to 12 months from now.
So 10 to 12 months from now, you know, we'll be talking about writing a check for 600,000, however much we need to do. So this is not us cutting a check tomorrow. This is, this is, we got a little time on this. We do have funding in our budget for, for road development that we, we know, we set aside for just this type of work. And, and I think, granted, if, if we get the buyout approved and we need to help homeowners, we'll find the money for that. And thankfully, our charter keeps that 90-day rainy day fund and yes, we dipped into it a little bit, but, but we will, we will find the funding. it a little bit, but we will find the funding. I'm confident of that, that we'll find the funding to help the homeowners. But, you know, we can't, we can't just be shortsighted and not do road construction where we need it, when we need it. We have to, we have to do the right thing there, too. So, it's not a this or that. It's both, and we just have to make sure that we can do that, but I think we can. So, that's all I'll say on it.
Councilmember Gustafson?
Marad, are we expecting any decrease in revenues this year as a result of property value decreases from Harvey?
We've only received preliminary values from Galveston County thus far, not Harris County yet. Galveston County had shown a 3% increase in values, but that's inclusive of new construction. So, I imagine there was a decrease in values across the board and just with new construction.
But still an overall increase of 3% in the property values?
Correct. Historically, however, council, as you well know, have adopted effective rate, if not lower sometimes. So, assuming we don't do that same thing moving forward.
Okay. All right. So, it is, I'd been hearing we were going to see a decrease in assessed value.
Until the protested values are finally determined.
But historically, how much does that reduce it?
Protest...
1%, 2%? Or is it more significant than that?
We had 100 and something million in protested values last year. Of that, 85% of it was kept. So, of 190 million in values protested, we got to keep 120 million or thereabouts in value.
What was our overall value last year?
Two, and, well, I don't have both counties off the top of my head. And Galveston County is roughly 2.4 billion.
So, as a percentage of that overall, what was, what did we lose in value to protest? 1%? 2%?
Less than 1%.
Okay. So, it's, we're still going to have a net gain. And all I'm trying to figure out is, are we going to have a net loss in revenue this year because of the storm, and then we're committing 400,000? But from what you're telling me, it doesn't sound like that's the case.
And that in my comment relative to the tax rate, it's only, the value is what the value is, what council has control over is the tax rate.
If we maintain the tax rate...
Yes, sir.
And don't go to an effective rate, we'd be able to pay for this.
Correct.
Okay. I've said what I need to say, and I think everybody understands what Councilmember Branson is saying, what Councilmember Foreman is saying, and just bringing it to light is letting everybody to know what their charge is going to be going forward, so.
I need to find money, is what you're telling me.
Absolutely.
Got it.
So, any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Showed to be unanimous. Thank you very much. Item 14, discussion and possible action regarding approval of an interlocal agreement with Galveston County related to their November 2017 bond program. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Showed to be unanimous. Discussion and possible action regarding naming the Dog Park and Doggy Splash Pad facilities. Do I have a motion? I'll second it. Mo, can you tell us the names?
Yes.
Can I ask what a doggy splash pad is?
Yes, you can. Council, may I recall, our, let me let James Tony, our Parks Director, give you the background on this item.
So, the item we have before you is the naming of the Dog Park and the Doggy Splash Pad. I know, I know. It's going to be, it's going to be one of its kind. It's going to be a beautiful addition to the park. Luckily, we had a sponsorship donor, Ron Carter of Alvin, has donated 25,000 dollars to the project to cover the cost for the Doggy Splash Pad. So, with that donation, part of that request was to have that facility named after him, just the splash pad portion of the Dog Park. The Dog Park itself, since we received the 25,000 dollar grant from Petsafe, part of that requirement says that the Dog Park needs to be named with the Petsafe naming inside of it. So, you'll have the City of Friendswood Petsafe Dog Park, and then there will be signage on the splash pad that says Ron Carter Splash Pad.
My question still is, what is a doggy splash pad? I'm just, I actually don't know what it is.
It's just like a splash pad for the kids, but it's just for dogs.
Do the dogs walk across it and water shoots out of them?
Water shoots, yep, yep.
And dogs like that?
Of course they do.
Okay.
He's a cat person? Okay. Yes.
It jumps on the dog's side, it gets lost.
I can answer that.
Seeing no more discussion, all those in favor? All those opposed? Showed to be unanimous. Discussion and possible action regarding concurrence with the city manager's appointment of the director of community development.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Go ahead, Mo.
Most of you already know Ms. Aubrey Harbin. She has been with Friendswood for 10 years now, 2007 hire, much like me and a few others and Katina on that front row. Aubrey has been with our community development that entire time. Prior to her service with Friendswood, she worked in the planning department for the city of Pearland. She has been an asset to the organization, and for the last close to two years has served as deputy director. Technically, up until this evening, I'm currently the director as well, and I am looking forward to taking off that hat and giving it to her because she has, she's done an exceptional job over that time period and has performed wonderfully. Yes. So, if council concurs with my appointment, I would like to name her as the director of community development this evening.
Aubrey, I met you in Pearland years ago. Congratulations. You got my vote. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Item 17, discussion and possible action regarding the extension of water meter reading services contract between the city of Friendswood and InfraMark, formerly Severn-Trent. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Showed to be unanimous.
Can I make a comment about water meter real quick?
Sure.
This public service. I just found this out the other day, that that little covering that covers your water meter, the city will replace it. A lot of them got damaged in the ice and storm, and then your lawnmower mows them over, and I just found out the other day that if you ask, if you ask this gentleman here or somebody in the city, they will replace it. So, if anybody's got one out there that the cover is in bad shape, just contact the city, and they will get you a new one.
Thank you, Councilmember Rocky. Patrick, item 18, discussion and possible action regarding a citywide traffic study. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, Patrick.
Can I add one thing, Mayor?
Yes, you may.
On the previous item, if you, if citizens are watching, if they would contact Public Works, that's the better way to go. The number is 281...
On the meter covers?
Yes, sir, on the water meter covers.
What's the number?
Or you can call Steve Rocky on his cell phone.
Yeah.
No problem. Call me, I'll take care of it.
Lot of them floated off. Item 19, consideration and possible action regarding the following. Resolution 2018-07, a resolution of the city of Friendswood, Texas, finding that CenterPoint Energy Houston Electric LLC's application for approval to amend its distribution cost recovery factor pursuant to item 16. Texas Administrative Code 25243 to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied, finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company. Finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed upon to the public, as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to be the company and legal counsel. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Do we need to explain this any farther? We're denying their rate increase.
Exactly.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Showed to be unanimous. Item B, Resolution 2018-08, a resolution of the city of Friendswood, Texas, requesting the state of Texas seek a waiver to the 70% overall benefit, community development, community development block grant disaster recovery funds be used to support low and moderate income persons in supporting Galveston County's efforts in seeking said waiver.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Gustafson? Do we happen to know for sure that getting it down to 50 is enough to bring anything here, or is that just to allow other communities in Galveston County to benefit? We have 90 days to comment on it.
The 50 threshold was what was utilized during Hurricane Ike, and we had received two disaster recovery allocations, one in the first round for generators, as well as the Fire Station 3 expansion that equated to 2 million for Friendswood, and then round 2.2 was 4.6 million that built Whispering Pines, Friendswood Link Road.
Fair enough. I just want to make sure we didn't want to be, we weren't cutting ourselves short.
Yes, sir.
We have, we're available to make comments for another 90 days, right?
Yes, sir. And we've already submitted the comments from the letter that you submitted and council ratified earlier this evening.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Item C, a joint resolution of the, or Resolution 2018-09, a joint resolution of the city council, the city of Friendswood, and the Board of Trustees of the Friendswood Independent School District, providing for a cooperative, comprehensive emergency management plan.
Motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? D, Resolution 2018-10, a resolution of the city council of the city of Friendswood, Texas, authorizing the Galveston County Assessor and Collector of Taxes to assess and collect tax of property in the city of Friendswood, Texas, and repealing all other resolutions inconsistent or in conflict herewith.
Motion.
I have a motion and a second. I have a third. Any discussion?
Just like to ask if, in the future, is this something we can go out on RFP on, or is, I know it's too late now, but...
We can in future years if it's council's desires.
Okay.
Seeing no more discussion, all those in favor? All those opposed? Item 20, consideration and possible action regarding the following. Ordinance number 2018-08, second and final reading of an ordinance amending the zone classification for a tract or parcel containing 3.306 acres located at 2245 and 2275 Thomas Trace, Friendswood, Texas, by granting a zone classification from Community Shopping Center, CSC, to Community Shopping Center Specific Use Permit, CSC SUP.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Rocky?
I know this isn't part of the actual zoning part, but part of the application for this is to have their own EMS system, and I'd just like to ask at some point, when it's appropriate, that the city let our EMS review that document. That's all.
Sure. That's fine. We'll definitely facilitate that.
Thank you, Marad. Councilmember Gustafson? We don't have anybody here really speaking against it, or we haven't had anybody here really speaking against it. All the property owners in the vicinity are aware of this is going on?
Yes, and I believe they spoke to Penze.
Yeah, we had a few owners, I think, that were here for the joint public hearing.
Yeah, I remember that, and I've not seen anything since then, so.
No.
Okay. But they were all, they, every adjacent property owners were all notified, and I think, Lewis, you're involved in this to some degree, and you've always done a real good job with that, so, okay.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that, I think, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the landowner, I was, the landowner made quite a few concessions to those neighbors that they were quite happy with.
I was going to make the same comment. I think the developers worked with them very well and done a lot to mitigate it.
They're going to have a lovely park out behind this property, so they should enjoy it.
Seeing no more discussion, all those in favor? All those opposed? Showed to be unanimous. B, Ordinance 2018-12, first and final reading of an ordinance adopting budget amendment number seven, or eight, to the original general budget of the city for fiscal year 2017-2018. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Let me, before we do communication from mayor and council, let me jump down and finish the consent agenda. Councilmember Rocky?
I...
You pulled, you pulled some items off you want. You good with the discussion on them now?
Yeah, I thought we voted on them.
Y'all voted on it before executive session, and it was my fault for scheduling too early this evening, so I know time has passed.
Item 21, communications from the mayor and council members. Who would like to start? Councilmember Hill?
I'm sorry y'all had to hear all that stuff my grandson said. I should have held the red card up center.
Yeah, what'd you pay him?
I just want to say this, after 12 years, it's been very rewarding to sit up here with, I don't know how many different people, two city secretaries, three city managers. But what I want to say about staying a long time, I know these campaigns are brutal, and that's the part I don't like, but I have seen projects get completed that I don't think would have got completed unless somebody saw them through. Lake Friendswood is a classic example. We hit roadblock after roadblock after roadblock, and it takes years to work through them. The week after I got elected, I rode around the town with Gary Harris and Harold Whitaker, and they showed me different things they wanted done. One of them was draining downtown. But we figured out a way with the help from the Commissioner's Court and Tech Doc to get it done. The last one of those major drainage projects has been completed now at Parallel Sunset. There again, with Commissioner's Court, it's, I'm talking 10 or 12 years to get these things done. So, when you think about hanging up your shingle on the city council, everybody except John, no, it just takes a lot of time and patient. Mud Gully is another one. I could, it just goes on and on. There's a bunch of, and something else, nobody, no one person gets anything done. It takes this whole staff, it takes the whole council, it's a joint effort, and it's quite rewarding, which we all know. When I got elected, I think one field at Centennial Park had lights on it. And I mean, it just, you can look back and, okay, I'm going to quote Dave Smith. In a state of city address one time, he said, "I left it better than I found it." And I'm going to say, "I left it a heck of a lot better than I found it." And I'm going to say something about this guy sitting here. I used to call him anonymous because he did so many things. He helped on so many of these projects. Never, nobody ever knew who Anonymous was. I finally added him a few years later. But I built a football field out at Centennial Park with dirt from the drainage district, got it, got it all done. We needed a sidewalk. I called Anonymous. Three days later, the sidewalk was done. I can go on the FFA building, the restrooms out there on the ball field, the, I can't remember that young corporal's name. I'm sorry for that, but...
Canning.
Canning.
Wesley Canning. On the Veterans Memorial, I mean, with no, didn't expect any praise or even be noted, but he's helped, and I know it. And now, a lot of people know it. Anyway, thank y'all for giving me the opportunity, and I have thoroughly enjoyed it.
Well, I'm going to save my goodbyes for Councilman Hill and Mayor Kevin for next week. But it's a pleasure to be up here. It's a pleasure to get three more years, and I'm looking forward to it, and I think we got a terrific council coming into place, and we're going to lose some really powerful people, but it's, I'm with Jim. I could do without the campaigning, but, you know, you get to meet a lot of people on the campaign trail, which is the nice part. So, I'm looking forward to my next three years.
Well, I, too, am going to save my comments for next week, so stand by, fellows. But I would like to congratulate those who were successful in this campaign, and two were here in the audience, so going to miss you guys, but looking forward to y'all joining us, so hope everybody has a great week and looking forward to seeing everybody next Monday.
Yeah, big shoes to fill, you, too. Boy, going to miss you both. I'll try to reserve some comments.
I'll, uh, I'll try to reserve some comments for next week too. But, uh, thank you both for your time and service. And, you know, Jim, what, 12 years here? How many years before on?
This guy here did 10 on Penze.
Nine, 10, six, 16, 17 years, something like that. Need to get a real job now, I guess. Okay. Thank you guys. Got, really, we're going to miss you guys here and big shoes to fill. Don't go far. Leave your phone numbers because they're going to need them.
Well, Jim was obviously serving on the first council that named the community. I, I, I'm not going to have anybody to pick on, so I, I can't reserve comments, you know, that long. So, uh, I, to both of you guys, it, it means a lot that, uh, to anyone that volunteers to come up here and do this for no money, very little thanks, and a lot of criticism. It takes a special person, and it takes, it takes a lot. You know, it can take a lot out of you if you let it get to you. And, uh, both of you guys have represented this community tremendously well. I mean tremendously well, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for each of you. The jobs that you did, the commitment that you've made to this community, to making this community better, will go unnoticed by many, but it will not go unnoticed by me because I appreciate it. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm glad to call both of you friends. Old, old friends, at least one of you. I don't know what I'm going to do about the old jokes, and I'm like the most tenured guy on this council now, which is ridiculous. Uh, yeah, you're old too. But anyway, but anyway, I, I truly do. I want to, I want to thank you guys. And, you know, Jim, I, I know that, you know, that there's, you come across a lot of times the way that I do. Not, not very, uh, not very easy on the ear sometime, but nobody, nobody in this community can question your love and desire to make this place better. And, and I mean, that goes back before I ever knew you, before, you know, when, when I was growing up with, with Trey in high school. I knew that you were looking out for this community and you always have. And, and, and that means a lot. It really, really does. So, you know, I, I just appreciate what you guys have done and, and thank you both for the jobs that you've done. To, to represent our community in and around the county and Harris County and, and everything else. Kevin, you, I couldn't be prouder to have someone as mayor. So, so thank you for your time as well.
Like many of the others, I'm going to withhold my parting comments until, um, until Monday. I do want to compliment your grandson, Jim. I think Austin just did a magnificent job up there. Carried himself like a real professional, and you should be. Yeah, I, um, yeah, nice, nice job. Everything, I agree with everything he said. So, um, anyway, um, yeah, we'll talk Monday.
That sounds like a threat. I want to thank the community and this council and the staff and the volunteers for this opportunity to serve Friendswood and to be up here. Y'all made it possible. Thank you very much. I genuinely mean that. It was an honor to serve. And, uh, I just can't wait for Monday. We're adjourned.